Twenty second, 2025. We are here this evening in the Savage Center. Present this evening are Ms. Judith Bromley, Dr. Joan Giblin, and myself. Not able to attend tonight are Teresa Stewart and David Hiltz. Can I please ask everyone who is in attendance and able to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. So, the first item on our agenda this evening is correspondence. Do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Fabulous. The second item on the agenda is the warrant report. I will read into the record the warrant report that was signed this week by Mr. Hiltz. This week, Mr. Hiltz signed warrants in the amounts of $27,793, nine thousand-
Madam Chair, I believe that's $21,000.
Did I say twenty seven?
I think so.
I did. I think that's the first time I've messed up on this in a long time. Twenty-one thousand, seven hundred ninety-three dollars, nine thousand, two hundred sixty-one dollars and thirty-five cents, six hundred thirty thousand, two hundred fifty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents, nine thousand, four hundred forty-two dollars and twenty-one cents, forty-eight thousand, eight hundred seven dollars and fifty cents, ten thousand, two hundred fifty-one dollars and ten cents, two hundred nine thousand, five hundred thirty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents, thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred nine dollars and fifteen cents, two hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty-three cents, seven thousand, nine hundred forty-two dollars and seventeen cents, for a complete total of nine hundred eighty-five thousand, four hundred ninety dollars and ninety-three cents. Are there any questions on the warrant report this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to public comment. A reminder to the public that public comment can be accessed in several different ways. You can come in person to our meeting at the Savage Center. You can sign in once you get here. You can also call the superintendent's office by noon the day of our meeting to put yourself on the list to be here in person or to get a link to our hybrid meeting. As a reminder, public comment is a time where the public can come and speak to us. We do not debate with the public as they are speaking. You get three minutes to tell us what is on your mind. Is anybody here for public comment this evening? Mr. Luff, did anybody sign up for public comment this evening?
They did not, Madam Chair.
Okay, seeing none, then we will, at seven-ten, I will declare public comment closed. All right. So, we'll move right into our next item, which is appearances. So, this evening, we have Ms. Kate Davy here to speak with us along with Dr. Munoz and Mr. Luff about the Student Services Audit Analysis Update and Action Plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a reminder, over the course of this past year, we did a very comprehensive student service audit that looked at special education, counseling, finance, ELE, nursing services, and counseling, I think I said counseling already. That audit brought a lot to light. It was a five-hundred-or-so-page report. Academic discoveries finished that. There were multiple core findings within that report. Ms. Davy and I met with every leader of those departments and really went through all of the findings in detail. And she did a great job kind of going through and identifying the core findings, pulling out those items that were kind of one-offs, right? Where there may be one person might have said something or one data point to create those findings. We went through, tried to identify the root causes for some of the issues that we found. And then, we also identified where we have already put things into place to kind of remedy some of the things that were in the report. I will say, we did a tremendous amount last year coming into this year already to try to solve some of these issues. As I had kind of stepped in here from my first year, I identified with the new team and the current team, you know, certain areas that we needed to improve on, and we did those. So, within this report, Ms. Davy and myself will kind of go through, will share those core findings, share the root causes, the action steps we're going to take, but also the action steps that we already have taken. So, you can see those highlighted for each of those areas, kind of next steps in the piece. And then, Dr. Munoz will share kind of the work that we've been doing and he's been doing with the accommodation, the curriculum accommodation plan, the D cap, which was identified as an issue there. So, we'll hear about the action steps there, too, and then, we'll open it up for questions from you guys.
I don't wonder if I have access to the file.
Yeah, I lost it as well.
Yeah, and I peeked over my neighbor's shoulder, and she's got access, so.
Because I've requested it again.
I just hit two again. I was like, oh.
Oh, that's interesting. We will get you that.
Thank you.
I'm just glad it wasn't just me that, not just, you know, telling me to get those.
If you just want to make it to anyone that can view, Ms. Davy, I think it'll work out. Awesome.
You should make that it now. Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. David, you want to start reviewing the core findings in the special ed area?
Sure. So, in looking at it, they found really four consistent areas that we needed to look at to identify some gaps. And one of them was differentiated instruction and co-teaching, and that our current practices were not consistently meeting the diverse needs, indicating a need for more robust and varied implementation of differentiation and co-teaching models, which we are definitely working on through. Throughout this, professional development was really indicated that it was needed, as well as a look at the curriculum being used in our sub-separate programs was another area that was in that same vein. Student-centered IEP goals, the process for developing the IEP, and the data really to drive those and to make them more effective. So, also, an area that we've already done a lot of PD in, starting last year with the new IEP and continuing this year through the assistant directors. And our new model has really given us the capacity to work really closely with our staff to develop SMART goals for themselves, but also to push that towards the students as well.
I think it's important to note to the state, when they developed and pushed out the new IEP, there was an amazing amount of focus on self-determination skills, right, for students, right? The self-awareness and the goals that they're going to set for themselves and all those pieces. And as the special ed staff know, that has been insane to kind of learn all about.
Yes.
But that certainly is something that the entire state is looking at in the process.
Agreed. Instructional clarity and engagement, as well as consistent procedures. Consistent procedures definitely, in the last couple of years, we've come up with a lot of practices, policies, and procedures that are really beneficial, but they seem to get lost in Google Drive, and the communication out of them was difficult to access. So, we worked on streamlining that process as well. So, overall, the root cause seemed to be standardized, to deficiency in standardized operational procedures and the need for targeted professional development so that they can implement effective, high-leverage instruction to students. I mean, it's student-focused always in special education. So, in professional development, clear and actionable IEP expectations and goals. We have worked Kathleen Gould, who is the Assistant Director pre-K to four, and Christine Noonan, who is the Assistant Director five through twelve, and Karen Milch, who is our added district assistant director, has created and implemented professional development in these areas. And our staff is really responding well to it. We have gotten a lot of really good feedback since it's all, our staff meetings are now, the second staff meeting of the month is a department meeting, and those used to be virtual, and a lot of people would be taking them from their car or while they were commuting. We have changed that to be in-person, and so, they are very interactive. I think it's, they are getting very good professional development, but there are also really robust conversations that are generated from those. So, I think that that's been very beneficial. Fading support, we are finding that we might be over-helping, is what the audit said. And so, how to sort of do that gradual release, that I do, you know, we do, you do, that, and that's a PD that we are actually presenting to our paraprofessionals because they also need to have this, you know, these findings presented to them in a way. They did professional development yesterday through the DESI e-modals, modules, and they were great. They got, I did a survey of them yesterday afternoon, and they really said for the first time, they were feeling as though those modules were interactive. They asked questions as it went through because it was online. They did one on IEPs and one on behavior, and both got great reviews from them. So, I'm really happy about that because they sometimes get lost in the professional development piece, and they are a very important part of our department. So, as well as defining co-teaching models and really sort of looking at the station versus parallel versus the team, all of the different models of co-teaching and which one really works. The elementary school, they do a lot of stations, and they have the students rotate. And I think with, you know, implementing Kegan as well, that has really generated a lot of different models of teaching, which is beneficial for our students. So, standardizing our practices, we are using Mustang metrics in all of our IEP meetings. Our team chairs have access to all of it, which is really using that data to drive, you know, eligibility and creating the IEPs. It's really been very helpful. We are using an observational tool as a note catcher, which can sort of show vertical alignment of the diverse teaching that we're looking for of differentiation and the fading support so that all of the evaluators can sort of align themselves that they're looking for the same thing.
Ms. Davy, so the pieces in yellow are the ones that we're already moving, right?
Yes, yes, we are already moving. Really, the only one that we haven't is just training to this. Because this is new, and we just went through this whole exercise of analyzing and summarizing and synthesizing this entire document into a spreadsheet and into this. And so, now for me to disseminate it out to them so that we can work on it. We really were doing a lot of these great things, and I think sometimes there wasn't the right person, was interviewed to hear what these things were, or it wasn't really communicated. One of the things that was a core finding was an IEP, centralized IEP system. We do have a centralized IEP system. They are all through Aspen. We have two dedicated full-time employees who send out the consent, the interview, the interview, the invite. They get the IEP out, they get it returned, they get it scanned into the, I mean, we have, it is all centralized here at Savage Building, and they do a phenomenal job. Beth Formica and Deana Fiori, they are, we couldn't run this department without them. There is so much paperwork, unfortunately, still paperwork. So, some of these things we are, you know, doing, but we could do better. We could do with more, you know, communication and more, just to have it more streamlined. A couple of just other things that we are doing, we created, Mr. Superintendent Luff and the union created a contract for our paraprofessionals to have a differential in their contract, and that is going to come with training, safety care training, and some behavior training that Karen Hurley is going to come and do for keeping students regulated. We have monthly meetings.
Actually, can I expand on that just a little bit?
Yes.
Because that kind of goes into some of the budget questions, too, is why we have so many powers. That was part of the report, too. So, you won't see that as a core finding here, but that alone, the training of the paraprofessionals, if you are in a program, a specialized program, you will have specialized training to be able to support the students in those programs. Whereas now, and we have incredibly wonderful paraprofessionals, but they might not be trained to be working with some of our highest-need kids. And so, you don't get the best implementation, I guess, in all cases, whereas then, you need more, right? And rather than having more, you can do with folks that are, have more expertise and can have a better result. So, that will allow for a reduction that way over time.
Just a few other things on communication. We created a one-pager. It's really probably three pages at this point, but I call it a one-pager. It's one-stop shopping for all of student services. It has all of our contact information. It has all of our program descriptions. It has all of the dates for the whole year, when report cards are, so they know when progress reports are due. We have a lot of process and procedures of an AT evaluation or any of the other referral process, and it's all linked into that one document that student services have. So, that was very helpful, as well as the three assistant directors, as well as myself. We all have open office hours every week. So, there is somebody available every day for any staff member who has a question. They all have the link, they can join at any time, and it's the same time every week. So, it has really developed. I have a weekly update that I send to the student services and to the paraprofessionals just to tell them a recap of the week. It goes out on Friday. One of the principals let me know that she actually needs to get it, too. So, now, I've added the principals to it because they get the questions. So, I, you know, sometimes there are blind spots, but we will alter that. On week seven, they will all receive it this week. So, they received it last week. So, we will move on to multilingual learners.
Before we go there, I will say, I want to thank you and obviously the community, too, for allowing us to kind of revamp and update this leadership structure. In all of my school visits so far, I asked the principals directly, like, do you feel like you have the adequate and appropriate amount of support from your student service administration at this time? Because that was always a question last year, right? I think it was Kate, and it was Lori, we're all over the place. Karen was doing it at a district, and now, everyone says, absolutely, I feel very supported in all the things that are happening. And my goal there, or our goal there, was to make sure that the principals weren't making those special ed decisions that they might not have the expertise to do either. So, time will tell how that kind of flows and works, but it's been incredible, I think, so far.
I feel it's been a big change. We also added a .5 position of a team chair at LMPA, which has given Kristin Noonan the opportunity to be a principal. So, we have a team chair there. We have two elementary team chairs, one dedicated for the middle school, one dedicated for the high school, as well as the overarching structure that Superintendent Luff put into place. And it has changed how staff has responded, that they always feel as though there is somebody to go and talk to, which is, you know, just to bounce different. There is a lot of gray in special education, and to have somebody else to talk those things through with is really important. So, multilingual learners.
Ms. Davy, can I stop you for a second?
Yeah. Did you have a question?
Yeah, this is a budgetary question. You said we added a .5?
We shifted.
We shifted, yes.
I just want to make sure our language is clear.
There was no addition.
Language is there.
Thank you. We had, the two facilitators I had talked about, we had 2.5, and that .5 became a-
Yeah. I remember the conversation and putting it there.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that we're clear as we come upon budget season.
Thank you. Yes, nothing was added.
I will say, too, just, I want to shout out to the entire special ed team with their work at the end of last year in creating and communicating the sub-separate program kind of models, the continuum that will be able to be in place for the years to come, too. I think, you know, obviously, everything comes with kind of these growing pains, there's no doubt, but parents knew where their kids were going to be, kids can be consistent in one location. And we kind of balance that out, knowing when we redistrict, the kids will be able to stay in those programs, too, as time goes on. So, really good work with that.
So, multilingual learners. Core findings were caseload reduction and collaboration, targeted professional development again, and process of streamlining. They did hire a CMS EL teacher over the summer, and then, using the six family liaisons, they were distributed through one per school, and they strategically allocated across all nine schools the ESL teachers that they had.
And this was part of the budget last year as we went through, so.
Yeah. The professional development, the PLCs that we have started this year, they have their own, which has been really great. The cross-curricular of third grade for general education teachers. The process of streamlining with special education, there was some concern about the referral process if you were going to be duly identified. That seems to have been streamlined in the communication on that with the SST teams, T-teams of having somebody represented on those teams that would be able to speak to that area of language acquisition was an important piece of that at the beginning of this school year. And I think the family communication tools with the family liaisons, Lexicate, and Parent Square have been really helpful to enhance our communication. Is there anything else that you want?
Basically, we've covered it. I've been had a lot of assistance put in place over the last two years.
Yes.
Depending on who you talk to, you might have not known all the information. So, after we begin the report, we were able to gather information to find out what is actually happening.
It was really nice to kind of go through this one and see, oh, a caseload reduction. Yep, we just did that. All right, we added all these people, right? The professional development, yeah, we got the PLCs going, they're really working as a team now. And obviously, all the data stuff that's there is, it was really nice to be able to see that.
Well, it's nice to also see that the things you saw were the things that, like, you could already start the ball rolling because it was an obvious, like, hit, you know? And so, yeah, it was a finding, but it wasn't a surprise.
Yeah.
Right. They highlighted areas that we knew, that we were already addressing.
Yep.
So, maybe it just reinforced that we realized was the same. So, in the counseling, Erin Regan, she's the department chair for guidance, she was very helpful in this area. The core findings were staffing and caseload. She was able to tell us that 250 students to one was the ratio, and we were well within that for our ratio. So, she felt as though that was not, not as concerning as it had sounded in the audit, and that they have a lot of PD with McLean at, through McLean at CMS and the high school that isn't available at the elementary. And that was an area that definitely we wanted to look at. But we have created a JABA-like for the adjustment counselors. They're going to meet monthly, which will be very helpful for them, as well as the PLC structure. They gave a big shout-out to Cartwell. They thought that, Cartwheel, they thought that that was well utilized at the high school and middle school, and maybe that we should expand that as well for the elementary. That adjustment counselor that was added at CMS was also a reconfiguration of FTEs. It was really collapsing some paraprofessional positions, and it was really important to, there was an employee there that was .4, and she went to 1.0, so it was added a .6 to have 3.4 adjustment counselors at Cokely. One area that they did talk about, a need for, that Erin sort of did back up, was the need for a social worker at CMS. That the social worker they have at the high school has been enhanced for gen ed students to make resources available to their families that maybe people in other physicians wouldn't be aware of, like wraparound services that are available in the community. So, she did identify that as an area that might be something that we should look at in the future.
Really surprised, though, about the identification of not having, especially at the middle school, high school level, not having the clinical-
Yes.
-professional development, because she felt like they really do have that-
Yes.
-with McLean and with Cartwheel and with all these different things. So, I mean, they, I think, in the opening days of school had their, you know, they skip out on the cooperative learning pieces, right? And they work with McLean and all these kind of things. So, they're in place. So, that was one of the surprises as we went through the report.
They even skipped out on the special ed professional development to go work with McLean as well. Yeah, she was very surprised. She was like, actually, we have that. Actually, we have this. But not as much at elementary. So, she was really highlighting that they did have these, access to these things at middle school and high school, and that maybe identifying some areas in the elementary would be helpful.
But the K to 12 PLCs will really help that, right? The professional learning.
Yes.
I'm curious about the social worker. Is that paid for entirely by the school money? I mean, by the school budget? Or, it seems like the work that you're describing, the social workers doing at the high school, and what a social worker would do at CMS is more expansive than just should fall under a school budget.
She meets with students, right. She meets with students as well, and she works with the staff there. But social workers, by nature, are more enmeshed in what the community has to offer generally. So, I think that she does offer that. She comes from that background. I don't know if that's-
I just, I wonder if there's an opportunity to collaborate with More to Help or with another town office.
Oh.
To figure out those wraparounds, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Dr. Alligant, here, you might be able to share, too, a little bit of what the social worker did at the high school.
Yeah, so, the first social worker was added, going back probably 2020, and was a restructuring of some funds that we had used for programs, and we had partnered with an outside organization during coming out of COVID, first coming out of COVID, to provide additional therapeutic supports and clinical consultation. After a year of that, we restructured those same funds to be able to add an additional adjustment counselor and social worker at the time at the high school, as well as the McLean clinical consultation, all for actually less than what we were paying before. And then, kind of grow those things internally. So, the social worker does short-term clinical counseling, typically intended to be four-to-eight week cycles to help kids who need to be referred to outside counseling get set up in that way. So, this is meant to meet the need of students who are not on an IEP and do not have counseling via an IEP, but need counseling. And it was meeting that, filling that gap.
How does that interface with Cartwheel then now?
Cartwheel provides outside services, outside therapeutic services.
Okay, yes. I'm sorry, I thought my understanding was that Cartwheel was a short-term, immediate, almost immediate type of thing. Is that incorrect?
Short, long.
Short, long. Okay. I'm familiar with the short, long. Yeah, okay.
Medium term.
All right. Thank you.
But something to look at, absolutely.
Yeah, just depending on what that social worker is doing, it seems like there might be opportunities for collaboration.
Moving on to nursing, one of the core findings was nurse burnout, significant issue due to complexity of student needs requiring increased nursing staff and/or improved coverage. In meeting with Tova, she was able to give us sort of context that the nurses were interviewed for this audit around the time that they lost their nurse leader to a very sudden, you know, that Jill passed away. And she felt as though that added to their responses of feeling overwhelmed, which I think is important context, as well as, we are well within our, you know, ratios for the guidelines. It's 500 students for every one nurse, which we are well within in all of the elementaries and the middle school and high school. And then, it's .1 nurse for every 50 students over that. And I think it was highlighted in there as well that they felt as though they couldn't call out when needed due to the sub-nursing pool, which we are working on. It is an area of need across the state. So, thinking of things, of ways to build that nursing pool is something Tova and I have been talking about. So, I think that will be, you know, a continued area of maybe, you know, bringing in Sean about the funding and how much nurses, sub-nurses make. But along with that, it was very good to hear from Tova that there are sub-books for sub-nurses when they come, and those, I guess, were not as comprehensive as they should be. And that was found in the audit as well. And she is working on that, and they are updated, as well as that all of the school nurses were not DESI-certified at the time of the audit, and they are. And we are HIPAA-compliant with private spaces for all of the students. It was, some of it was communication, I think, between the director of student services and the director of nursing, you know, that there were gaps in that. And I think that Tova and I have worked through those gaps and been able to streamline our communication since we are in constant contact about anything that's happening in the nursing process. And implementing training across the two departments, because nursing often goes at a different, you know, has different trainings at the time that we would, we'd have professional development. So, working together to make sure that we are cross-intersecting as much as possible. So working together to make sure that we are cross intersecting as much as possible.
I say shout out to Tova, who's doing a really nice job, looking at all these pieces and really doing a deep dive. And to any nurse that's watching out there, if you need to call out,
Yeah.
call out. We will, we will cover, we will figure it out. So please do that. I don't want anyone to feel like they they can't leave the building. We all know how that feels. And we don't want you to feel that way. And we will do our best to find subs and to to grow that pool.
Say, and any nurse out there that wants to sub.
And any nurse out there
Right.
that wants to come and sub for us, here's your chance to come to work for a greater organization.
Maybe you're tired, you want just a day, you know, a day or two a week, just get out of the house. You know, we're happy to have you.
That's good.
Good sales job. I like it. Okay, on to finance. One area was budgetary understanding. And I think that really came from one of the line items, which was considering out of district placements. There was a few interview answers where sort of like, I'm not sure where that money comes from, seemed to to find a core finding of they need to know where that money comes from. And I I think that that they do. I think that was just where that that core finding came from. Prioritizing maximizing service efficiency and actively reducing transportation costs and to move away from funding staff through grants, instead encouraging and funding in district programming where feasible. I just completed the IDEA 240 grant. We were able to move the last three OTs and one PT, so four professional staff out of the grant. And in doing so, they can now bill under New England Medical Billing because if you're paid through a grant, you can't also bill because federal and federal and remove the $32,400 in MTRS. So they are out and as well as moving powers in that that grant is absorbing four benefit packages that used to be on the town side. They will now be in the grant as well.
And just as an aside, as we do this, we make those shifts of professional staff that have MTRs. And MTRs double dips on the on mass state retirement. When we move them out, we're being really careful to make sure we're not adding any benefit packages to the town. Just so our town partners know, we're making sure that those are equal as we go as we go forward with this. Otherwise, we move them all over, but then you'd see a whole ton of budget benefit packages go to the town, and we're not going to do that yet. No, I'm just kidding. We're not going to do that.
So as as Superintendent Luff mentioned, we modified the locations of our PACS program so that those students can come out of LMPA and have a home neighborhood school experience as their peers. So that was a a big upheaval to move LEAP and to move PACS. But it it's really going to work in our benefit for this coming year for redistricting. I'm really happy that they are settled. We also updated our program descriptions with an entry and an exit criteria. So there was never really a concrete exit criteria to to come out of those in district programs. So that's a very helpful part. And in talking about that, we are going to start the process of when a student is identified to go out of district, we've determined that they no longer, their needs, needs cannot be met in district. We want to create a reentry criteria of what do they need to, you know, successfully complete in order to be able to come back to the district at that point so that we have a, you know, a barometer to use from the from the beginning. So I think that would be very beneficial, and I'll be working with Karen Milch for that piece. So overall, we did really well. We've implemented a lot of these things already. Moving forward, we're just going to keep, you know, enhancing our service delivery and fostering our inclusion and co-teaching models as well as working on a professional development to make sure that those key areas that were identified by them in the audit, as well as I surveyed the staff on our August 28th PD time together. And we want to make sure that we are also identifying areas for professional development that the staff themselves are interested in. Because if they're passionate about that area, then we want to make sure that we are addressing that. And so, and any questions? Oh, Dr. Munoz has a de-cap.
Yeah, so one of the finding core findings was about our de-cap and how comprehensive it it lacked. I guess it could be better. And so we initially wrote a draft when I first arrived. And the draft was just initial to get out there. It included more of the MTSS process. And so from there on, we feel like we still need to build it on because we want to have families know exactly what type of accommodations they can get before being referred for IEP services. And so so this year, we started circulating circulating our de-cap around, getting feedback from it. So we met with our our whole administrative team, school leaders and district administrators. And we actually went through the de-cap, pointed out some things we really liked, pointed things out that we wanted to change and strengthen. And we also pulled some other de-cap, de-caps from surrounding districts of what people really liked about their de-caps and what they were was missing from theirs as well. And so from our next steps now is to do a red line version and see all the feedback that we got from them and then take it to other stakeholder groups as well. And then hopefully, by the spring, we can have a fully comprehensive de-cap that we can put forward and say, this is our new and improved district curriculum accommodation plan.
And a lot of districts, you know, you heard the you heard the finding. People didn't know what it was or where it was. That's a very common theme around the Commonwealth. And I would say it became a common theme once MTSS and RTI kind of started taking hold in the state because those became the interventions. And the de-cap just kind of became this kind of ancient thing that we had to have. But nobody really looked at it anymore. Where now, I think, the the idea is, what can we do with that de-cap to really have those accommodations be the tier one interventions in MTSS, right? And so those are going to be the conversation.
And 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 be as a guide to hope for our MTSS teams to say, okay, what other interventions can we put in place that we are agreed upon across the district before we start saying this, we refer the student for services that are like an IEP service or something that they have to get testing for?
I think too that the it wasn't a finding, but just a personal experience, you know, being around the district a long time. I think it was just it was not implemented across all schools, you know, equally. It was it was not, you know, certain schools would use it, others wouldn't even know it existed. Or if it was implemented, in a case I happen to know about, the parent wasn't even involved. You know, so there was just just a kind of interesting implementation of the de-cap.
The principals hate me for this. I I tell them all, like at the elementary especially, what happened at one school has to happen to the other, right? We have to have a consistent experience for our kids. They don't hate me for it, but they like, you know what I mean? They like their autonomy too.
There's pluses and minuses to that, yes.
But this is one of those things, right? That we're going to implement a de-cap, and we're going to make sure everyone knows what it is, and we're going to implement it with fidelity across the district. Like, that's what
And bringing them all to the table at the same time allows them to have voice and input so their school context is involved for that. And one of the things they asked for was a like standardized form that they could fill out to say, okay, here's the kid, here's all the different things, so that way a parent can have something written down and just say, okay, I know exactly what's available for my my child.
Yeah, that would have been really nice. Yeah, I never This is great, I mean. And like there's consistency across the schools and communication.
So we have a lot of work to do still. This is, you know, I mean, just because we have one review and we're going to make these changes, things always happen and always change, right? It's it's if it was that easy and we fixed one thing and nothing else happened, then we'd be out of a job. So continued work, but but I want to thank Kate and her team, obviously, and Dr. Munoz and everyone who and Sean who worked on this, and take any questions that you guys have.
I have a question. With the special education findings, there was no finding around caseloads, which surprises me given the conversation that I have with many parents across the district. Are our caseloads for inclusion teachers, special educators, are they within the norm of our surrounding districts? Are they?
Yes.
They are?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say at the high school, they might be a little bit higher than throughout the rest of the district, but still well within the ratio. Sometimes at the beginning of the year, they're they are a little lower. And then as eligibility and meetings happen. But for the most part, caseloads was not not a core finding.
Did the audit do a review of, and I apologize if I wear this insensitively. There are some students whose disability causes them to become emotionally dysregulated or dysregulated period.
Yes.
That in turn can cause potential risk to both our staff and other students. Was there any sort of audit of the number of students with known physical risk due to their disability included in this audit? And how many of those students are assigned to any one classroom or any one educator?
I'll take that. I don't think there was because the data is not clear. So our safety team is actually working on that. As you know, Dr. Galligan and I worked last year to try to implement a system of reporting. So everything that's being reported is consistently reported across the elementary schools, the middle school, the high school. So we actually had that data because we sat down to look at all of it. And everything was, it was not clear, right? Who was doing what? If that was the same kind of behavioral event than than that was. But now with that data set and with the way our principals and our teams are now entering data into Aspen, we'll be able to pull that data from Mustang metrics individually for a student with disabilities as well and see just what you're what you're asking about. I don't think there's a way that academic discoveries could have kind of gone through and and found that.
I mean, that is one of the primary concerns of parents throughout the district, right? Is the is the safety of students. And I sitting on school committee for as long as I have, the I don't know if I'm talking out of turn, but staff safety is also a
Yes.
a big concern. And so I was curious to that I didn't see anything about that in the special education core findings of this.
We do have a big push for safety care, which I think is is has a lot of deregulate, you know, dysregulation strategies to prevent as well as it has a lot of strategies for staff to protect themselves. It enables them some ways to physically remove yourself, distance yourself, those kinds of things. And our BCBA's have done a really good job of training staff as much as possible in the allotted time to to give them those those skills.
And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you happen to be sitting there. We happen to be talking about special education. So this is a question that I get that I hear from parents a lot, and it may be outside of the scope of the audit. But I would appreciate if you were able to answer it or at least try to answer it. I do get asked by parents, well, you know, I understand that this child is, you know, having this issue as a result of their disability. But what about my kid who's being negatively impacted? And I have never been able to provide a good answer to that. And I'd love to know your perspective on that. Examples of chair throwing, examples of threatening words, those types of things. And so causing disruption to our to other students. How do we respond to the, how do we balance both both needs, both sets of needs there?
Right. I would, my response would be oftentimes, we, you know, if we have to evacuate the room for the other students to be safe, we do do that. But we replicate what they were doing in another space in the building as quickly as possible so that the curriculum is not disrupted for any length of time. The staff is incredibly, they're, you know, the the classrooms attached are very welcoming and everybody adjusts very quickly. And it's hopefully as minimalized as possible for for that. Also for the, you know, confidentiality of that student and their privacy. But it's, you know, minimally disruptive. If it has to happen, we do try to replicate that immediately in another location.
I'd also like to just say, you know, even though the audit didn't identify it, we did, right? Through the entry plan, through the conversation, that's why it's one of the strategic initiatives to look at all that data. Dr. Munoz did a a survey of families last year, right? Middle of the year or so, middle of the year survey, we sent out a survey for all families.
I sent it out probably two to three different times, once in yours, and then I sent out separately by itself. And and the question was straight out asked, overall, how safe does your child feel at school? And we only had 11% of parents say slightly safe. Everyone else was either quite safe or extremely safe. It was about 150 to 200 families that served responding to the survey.
So it's one good one good data point to see. We know that there are safety questions and issues. We know we have conversations with staff and they're concerned about safety. We know we have conversations with some of our families, especially, you know, where you're where you're referring to, when some of the kids in the general ed programs, for example, are are they kind of have to move aside because things are happening in the special ed classrooms. But, you know, we are a district that serves all kids. And we will do our best to limit those, to identify the behavioral interventions and professional development that we need so our staff can intervene without doing that to the extent that we can. And I hope the data really helps us focus on how to do that and how often it happens.
We did have Karen Hurley, who's a PT. She she's very focused on access to all students. She came during our August 28th day and provided PD in From Chaos to Confidence to give people the strategies to do with students other than just going for a walk, some other, you know, sort of physical pull and push activities that would help regulate students. And she is coming back in December to do a more intensive training in that same area with our paraprofessionals at the Cokely Gym.
Yeah, my concern, I I have no doubt that with the addition of the safety committee and the work that that everyone is doing, that the staff is being taken care of. Or we'd hear about it if they weren't. Not, and that's not in a bad way. But I do think that there's a little bit of a narrative out there. And so as you're looking at some of this data, I think parents don't know this. So the perception that's out there from parents is that there's massive, right? Because one incident happens, those kids text their parents, that gets around. So if as you're looking at this data, if we could get some of that data out there, if we could get some of the processes and protocols, I know it's not one size fits all. But, you know, if a if a student dysregulates in X number of ways, you know, this is typically what happens, right? You don't say exactly what happens, but this is typically what happens.
Right.
And just making kind of the internal workings of your department more overt, more externally facing so that
Right.
the average parent can look it up and get a sense of what is going on instead of having narratives out there that may or may not be supported by what's actually going on.
Because it's made for them through the text messages their kids might get or what
Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm not suggesting that we we break confidentiality, but the 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 work that you do and the work that you're talking about, the partnerships with McLean, like if we can be talking about getting some of that stuff out there more, I think that helps shift the narrative.
Right. And I think I focus a lot on CPAC and meeting with CPAC. But maybe this is you're you're identifying a blind spot, right?
Gen ed parents who are very concerned.
Of course, and that's a blind spot to to. My focus is is I have a monthly meeting with CPAC.
Yeah.
But maybe maybe visiting some of the PTOs might be helpful to sort of have them ask questions about the same exact thing.
Or you just say, Mr. Luff, I'm doing such a great job with my assignment, which is CPAC.
Well, I'm not, he is, he's very busy.
I'm just teasing, but yeah, there is. I think the general ed parents are a forgotten kind of stakeholder group in this.
One thing I just want to say with respect to this audit, and I appreciate all the work that special ed does because I have two kids who are dyslexic. But I would just say that communication, I didn't see that in the audit, but it needs to get better.
Right.
Because if I'm confused, how about the other parents? And the process isn't that complicated, and it should be so clear in understanding. And so I'm looking more through the lens of a parent and then being able to explain it to the kids. And I have never found that the communication is great. And I that's just my feedback. But I've spoken to enough parents that they feel as though
Right.
the process, the understanding, the communication has never been
With the student services department or with the special education as a
The student services department.
Okay.
That they're they're failure to follow up, like
Yeah.
And I can give the, I don't need to give examples right here, but I'm going to tell you that like the onus isn't on me as a parent to ensure that the services are being delivered.
Right.
It's on you guys.
Sure.
And it's not sometimes. And so how are you ensuring that parents understand that it's being delivered?
I will, I will share this. That was something that came up in my entry plan findings, right? Which is why, you know, we have a piece about student services in here too, along with the audit. And certainly, we know there were communication gaps, and that is why we expanded the leadership of special education. So we have somebody that is K to four, right? We have somebody that is five to eight. So they can assist and work with the teachers on how the communication has to happen, how those processes have to be followed. Because we did not have that necessarily last year, right? And so that alone is going to make big moves, right? And each of them will have their own leadership styles and and work on that. But it's 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 not as simple, I think, as as you were sharing. No, I'm just saying, it's not as easy to understand, you know, as as it's a very complex system. And to express to a parent why they have to go through all these hoops when they just want help for their kiddo doesn't necessarily come across the right way to many families either. doesn't necessarily come across the right way to many families either, right? Because it's, it's a really icky regulatory system to become eligible for services and then to get the services and all those pieces. And so it's a challenge that the team, I think, will work on to make sure the parents get that as seamless and as enhanced as possible.
But it's ultimately just creating a partnership of trust and trust building with communication. And that's where, you know, that's the theme with safety. That's the theme with special ed. Just knowing that you can trust your school partner, so.
Here we.
Yeah. Transparency, right?
I just, I have one last question. In a totally different direction. So when we.
I have a channel on Teresa today.
I have apparently.
I knew I should have memoed this. No, I'm just kidding. This is not a memo.
When, I do want to say that when we, the, the funding for this audit came from a warrant, right? From town meeting. And part of what we had promised was like, this is going, our, our special education budget takes up a large portion of our school budget. We have a very high rate of high needs learners. And so in part, this was to meant to be kind of like, hey, are we doing everything right? And your presentation was fantastic and great, but I think for the average town meeting member who said, yeah, we're going to give you $60,000 or whatever, I think we need to have a different style of presentation, basically saying, yes, this is what, yes, we're doing everything right. No, we're not spending money inappropriately. And here's what they identified so that we can, you know, be even more efficient. So it's, I'm just suggesting a tweak based on the fact that, you know, this was a warrant from town meeting. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Yeah, it does. It does. I mean, I think that's my messaging, you know what I mean? I think I have to message that out. I want them to look at the internals, what they need to fix, what's working well. And then I, I can work with town meeting on, hey, this is what we found.
Great. As long as someone's doing it. I just want to make sure that that doesn't get lost in different audiences.
We did get up there and ask for, it was actually more, and we asked for more because we were, thought we really needed it for a good comprehensive audit. And I was definitely one of the people that got up there and spoke to it and said, you know, that we, we could find out that we are not doing nearly enough, but we could find out that we're spending double, you know? So, you know, we really wanted this as an outside. And one of our criticisms, of course, was like, oh, you're just going to do an internal audit? Like what? Let's, you know, teachers, auditing teachers? Yeah, no, thank you. You know, we wanted this to be as legit as possible. And we did that, you know, we went out and got another, an outside agency to look at it. And this is what they came up with.
And there were some things that we knew and some things that we didn't.
I, I know we are way over the 15 minutes. I have one more question. Because you're here, as Joan said. So I know it was not something that they really went over and we've talked about this kind of offline, but the 504s. So that was not a finding. It was not something they really looked at in the audit. But I just had a general question that along with all these wonderful improvements, could you say like one or two words about any improvements in that area as well? Or is it just kind of embedded in this?
I think part of the decap is what's going to help a 504 plan and really help parents understand and teachers and administrators, like what is the difference between I need to have the student tested for services versus like, oh, I actually can get C per, C perferentials in the classroom without going through an IP process. Or I can get extended time testing on a test without going through an IP process, right? And so I think that the decap is going to help us, you know, vet that out and really iron out those details. And it'll help parents be like, okay, I don't need to have just my kid tested. Actually, I, I just need these things to happen and I see I can get them in a 504.
And 504s are funny, like to the average community member, you should know that a 504 is when a physical or mental impairment precludes you from accessing the curriculum for some reason, right? So a disability doesn't allow you to access and we provide accommodations to allow you that access. Where special education would be a need for specially designed instruction, the actual services required to provide that. And in many cases, Dr. Munoz, what he's discussing is if parents know that those accommodations are already available, there's less of a question, does my kid need a 504, right? Because we're giving those accommodations. But certainly any child, you know, and that's going to be part of the training too, any child who requires that accommodation for access purposes would be able to get that accommodation, do that. But it's a good point. It wasn't talked about a whole lot in the report and something that we need to focus on too.
Yeah, I feel like it's, it's because it technically falls under the special education department. And, you know, so I feel like that's kind of one of those law side, like there's a lot of 504s out there, but it's kind of like, oh, who do I, is it through the special education? Who's supposed to administer that? Am I supposed to have a new?
Student Services, special education is under student services. Say if student services and all these things are under, 504 goes under student services. People have synonymous with student services, special education, same thing, really it oversees other things other than just, yeah.
Yeah, but it was, but again, I know it has come up because, I mean, I'll speak in personal experience. It's like, you're, you're kind of like, you kind of feel like you're on the outside sometimes, like, because it's not special ed. So you're kind of like fighting for your own when it comes to, well, that's how it has felt, you know.
It'd be a nice training thing to do for families and what 504s are. I think that'd be a great thing to think about.
I think that goes back to what Judith said too, is how do you know that these accommodations are being met and followed and implemented at the same?
Right. Essentially the same thing. It was up to, you know, up to me as a parent to be like, is this happening? Ask my kid, does this happen? You know, and they're not the same things. They're not getting, you know, services in the way, the same way. But, you know, oh, are you being allowed to do that? This is on your, you know, your list and, you know, well, no, you know.
Right. That's an important piece. Thank you. Yeah, that's good feedback.
Any other questions? I think, I think we've, I think we have beaten that dead horse. Thank you, Ms. Eby, for joining us and staying for an extended time. And thank you all for joining us as well.
Thank you.
All right. We did go over, but I think that was very much worth it. That was a, that was a good presentation, so.
It was, I mean, it was a big commitment by the town last year and a big commitment by the staff. It was definitely a good one to have a long conversation about.
And it's good to hear that, like, like you said, a lot of the things we already saw, we already knew were validated by the audit and were already things that we're rolling. So just keep, keep rolling. Okay, so we will move on to the next agenda item, which is the superintendent report.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So these are pretty brief. Obviously there are questions that you may have, but I did want to give you an October 1 enrollment report. There are two documents that are part of the memo that I provided to you, really noting that our total enrollment as of October 1, which is not certified by the state yet, but we're fairly confident in the number, is 3,732 students. And the first document I provided to you was just to show you that number because the high school and the, and the middle school are involved in that one as well. The second document is our elementary class sizes. We have quite a few lower class sizes right now because we're still in the one to four grade level model that will shift. I am working on analyzing right now all of the projected numbers for next year based on, on kindergartners and first graders and second, wherever they live in the new boundaries for redistricting. So I'm working on that and I will have a more comprehensive report when the full committee's here at our next meeting. I'll be working with teachers soon too on what that might look like, just so they have an idea because they're getting anxious. If you're an elementary teacher out there and are wondering what's going on, I said, you know, at the end of October, we'd start working on this and that is still true. Please be patient with us. We just want to make sure that we make any transfers right. But that will be coming. You'll see there are some larger class numbers, like for example, at the Oldham fourth grade, Mr. Olson with the Student Service Department actually has more targeted services at the fourth grade. So that is why there's a couple of larger class sizes there, but they're all within appropriate numbers at this time. So I just wanted to give you that information and ask you if you have any questions for me at all.
No questions? No questions from the committee?
Okay, this next one is really quick, even quicker. I just closed it though, didn't I? So the strategic plan update, I just, I worked with three different vendors to bring me some quotes on costs outs for the strategic plan. I am going with Teaching and Learning Alliance. It's that product that you did see. We're still waiting on the final price. It will be less than the 20,000 that I shared with you. Through the PRISM grant, Dr. Munoz and Ms. West are working on ways that we can consolidate two services they're providing and see if we can get a better cost. So.
We're actually meeting with the chief executive tomorrow.
Okay, good, good, good. So once we have that number, I will share with you what that was and then what the next steps are for timeline. I am guessing it will be more of a December to, to, or January to June process for the collection of the data, the development of the plan and all that kind of stuff. So any questions on that? Okay, we might want to. I met with Jerry Miller and Paula Pelagi just the other day to kind of get an idea of what they were looking at in terms of what they needed for us for the concession stand slash bathroom at the Norwood High School football field. They just needed to know that we would support something at this point in time. So there's no other ask for us at this time. They are actually looking at the required guidelines for how many stalls or bathrooms that would be needed for the stadium size, the stands that are currently there. Right now, people use the bathroom inside and the outdoor water potties. And that meets code, but once you actually have a structure, there's a certain number that needs to be equipped. So they're trying to figure out what that is first. Once they identify that number and the cost, they are working with the CPC right now and whether they get that grant or not. The CPC previously was not able to fund any of that kind of a project. And I forget which one, whether it's the concession, the bathrooms, now something changed in the guidelines where they are allowed to cover that, at least part of it, at least half of it. So they are hoping to receive money from the CPC. And then at that point, they're going to look at the overall cost and do a significant amount of fundraising from previous alumni and see where they land. And then they hope to go to possibly capital outlay to see if there's something that they can do to finalize the cost. So they are not requesting anything from us right now, but the support of the committee to progress on that.
This has actually been on Capital Outlays radar since I was, have been on it. I think every year, somebody champions discussing it or pulls me aside and wants to talk about it. And at one point too, it was with potentially to try to package it with the shifting of the tennis courts, which unfortunately for anyone who doesn't know, if your child plays tennis at the high school and they play in the afternoon sun, it is right in their eyes when they are serving. So that was a unfortunate oversight when the high school was built. So there was, there was at one point a, a thought that if it could be packaged with this, you know, shifting of the tennis courts and then, oh, and we could put a concession stand right where they used to be or something like that. But so it has definitely been on the radar for a while. So I'm actually, I'm happy for this group for trying to really get something jump started and.
Yeah, I think it would be, it would be good for the high school kids.
It'd be good to not have people traipsing through the high school to use the bathroom too. I mean, that's just.
Well, there's that and there's, there's issues of physical disability, right? Folks that have to move all the way into the high school from the stands to do that, if you're a member of the community, right? So there's different things that are beneficial for it.
Yeah, definitely.
And the log jam as you walk into the, any game, as you know, the concession stand or the table, I should say, is right there.
All right, any questions for Mr. Luff? Okay. All right, so we will move into the next item, which is discussion of the long-term agenda. So I will take that because David is not with us this evening. But I'll just do what I normally would do and say, if you could take a look at the long-term agenda, we can take a look at the next couple of dates. But if you see anything on here that needs to be put on here, we did discuss at the beginning of the year that it's still okay to put comments into this document for David and Superintendent Luff to put on upcoming meetings. So at the next meeting, we do have a budget subcommittee update, obviously long-term agenda, which we will do once a month as per our protocols. Monthly budget transfers, redistricting update from the superintendent and an MSBC update, so budget heavy. Well, it's always budget heavy.
And we did, and we did have Student Advisory Council on there. Dr. Galligan has asked me to move that because they're not having their first meeting with you folks until October.
Next, Tuesday, yeah, next Tuesday.
And so it's a really quick turnaround for them to meet with you and then have a presentation ready for here. So I, for now shifted that down to December 3rd. But there's a lot of stuff on December 3rd, so we need to, I need to talk to David and see what he would like to do with some of those things.
Yeah. I mean, generally, I mean, they come in 15, 20 minute presentations. So it's not, it's not usually too big of a heavy lift, yeah. Let's see, okay, yeah. So then on December 3rd, we would have policy heavy, policy subcommittee update, quarterly food services update, MSBC, which I think we had the one before. Are we doing, think we need to do that again?
I think it's because there's only one in November and then that will be the first one in December.
Oh, okay, because you would have met again.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think we had said we were doing quarterly, but if there are interesting things to keep updating.
I think that's just me, I was putting them in there monthly because we were meeting with them monthly, so.
I actually prefer it myself. I want to hear what you guys talked about at your meetings and how it's going and what's getting closed up and buttoned up.
You'll have to wait till November 5th for that.
So then we also, the AP update and report, fall, fine arts recognition, athletics recognition, Student Advisory Council.
And looking for feedback on, obviously the AP update was a new thing last year and whether or not that's something you guys are interested to keep going on there or not. I'm not sure if that was something that was.
I think it's an interesting thing to hear along with the MCAS, like, you know, especially following on the MCAS updates, you know, just kind of the other, the other services, the things that are, that are happening. And I think it's, I think it's worthwhile to hear. All right, and then, I mean, I'm not going to go through it all, but you can see the rest of it for what's coming up and just let us know.
And I will make a, this is a question for you, Madam Chair. We're missing two members tonight, obviously. We're going to have a conversation later about budget priorities. We do have a November 5th where it is budget heavy.
Yeah, I, I actually was thinking the same thing, that it might be worth.
Shifting it down there. I think it would make sense because you'd have all the members, it's not too late for me to get your feedback before I develop, you develop the preliminary budget, so that is a.
I knew you guys would let me know how you feel about it, but we did do a lot more with the special ed presentation than planned. And I do feel like this might get some discussion going. So is everybody okay with shifting that to the November 5th? Perfect. And then I, because you did mention the student activity, Student Advisory Council, I, Committee Council, I always forget. Just council, right? Yeah, okay. A reminder, if anybody would like to attend, the meeting is next Tuesday. It is 10:19, wind block, 10:19 a.m. at the high school. Probably still in the, one of the conference rooms at the front. I, I will actually be able to attend, so I will, I will be there. I believe Ms. Stewart is planning on going as well. But our Student Advisory Council should meet with, if at all possible, the entire school committee. So we try to get as many of us as possible. It has been one to two of us in the past. But obviously, wind block is not an easy one for working people to make it to. So just to, just to put it out there, if that is on the calendar, it's on our school committee calendar, so definitely feel free to join if you are available. All right.
The only, the only thing else that's not on this calendar that I would ask for you guys to consider is we are going through the ELA K4 curriculum refresh and then the Math 512 curriculum refresh. I've told both committees I would love to have a choice by early March. That'll give you guys either a chance to vote on it on March 18th or, which is the, you know, the budget vote on March 26th. So I just didn't know what date, so I can let the committees know. Obviously, if they can't come to a decision, I'll come back and report and we can look for another date. But the goal is to have them do that, so that way the teachers will have the next two or three months to learn about the new stuff before at least the following year. If there's something new chosen, we're going to obviously vet what we have. Some of the stuff we have right now is highly, highly rated, so we're going to go through what we have and then go through some other, other curriculums as well. And we've already began that process. Teams have already been meeting. We had a meeting yesterday actually for the ELA one, math one's next week. And so those are the deadlines that I gave them.
So are you thinking more like?
March 18th probably if.
Oh, March 18th for an, for an actual?
For a vote.
For a vote.
I think they're, they're targeting to have a choice by early March. March 25th maybe being the backup if they can come to a decision.
Well, because some of the things on March 18th are pretty mild so far.
Yeah, strategic plan recommendations, I'm not sure where they'll be in that process with that whole, that piece.
The only reason is because early April is our last PLC meeting and we figured that they might be use PLC time to learn about their new curriculums, whether it's the 512 about the math or K4 about, you know, they might want to have a chance to actually spend a couple hours looking at the stuff that we're going to adopt for the following year.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. And I'm looking at the, the agenda for that day and is, except for the, well, we had said the budget hearing. So that's the only, but the budget hearing is unless we have something really controversial.
We'll see, we'll see, we'll see, we'll see how the preliminary sets up and where we are at that point.
If things are getting a little heated up to that point, we might have to shift, but.
I just wanted to put on your radar.
Sometimes our, sometimes our budget hearings are crickets and sometimes they are a wild party.
Yeah, and this is a reminder, the 25th is in there just for a couple of small things too, right? Just for the budget vote, because it's back to back. We wanted to make sure it was a quick meeting. You tell me how I'm doing, you vote on the budget, good to go.
Yeah, I think that's the best way to do that, back to back and just kind of keep it. Because we, we have in the past tended to, oh, well, we need this. And obviously if like Sean needs us to vote on something emergency wise, clearly we put that on the agenda. But really try not to just slap it on because we have a date.
Okay.
All right, so any questions on that?
No.
All right, we'll move into the next items under budget. So the first item is the budget subcommittee update. So in Ms. Stewart's absence, I will give you the budget subcommittee update. So we met last week, last Wednesday, right? Was it Wednesday? Yes. From 12:30 to 2:30. It was actually a really good, a really good meeting, very productive. We talked about the FY '27 budget process, the schedule, we kind of went back over the schedule. We talked about, and you can see these things linked in, in the memo that's in your packet. We talked about the five-year forecast, and then, of course, we talked about the history of stabilization and circuit breaker accounts. That was actually a question from the FinCom as we were heading to, the Finance Commission meeting was Thursday night. So we met on Wednesday, we went to the Finance Commission on Thursday night. I think, am I jumping the gun there on that? Okay, perfect. Making sure that wasn't on the agenda and I was taking someone's thunder. As, you know, we go and meet with them periodically just to, you know, especially to talk about the budget as the year, throughout the year. So some of what we talked about in the budget sub-meeting was to discuss how we were going to go into that meeting. Mr. Mannion did a great job now speaking to the Finance Commission, and one of the things that we were going to speak to them about was our warrant article. I know, like, I'm kind of getting away from the budget sub, actual update, but...
We have the conversation in budget subs, so it's...
Yeah, so we were going to them to discuss the warrant article that we had put forward to go on to the town meeting warrant this fall, which was to max out our special education reserve fund. That was actually a good conversation, that's where a lot of this came out, of the history of the stabilization, history of the circuit breaker, because the Finance Commission wanted to understand, you know, what, where our money had been, how many times have we pulled out of stabilization, assurances basically that if we put this in and we max it out, are we just using it to balance the budget every year? Which has happened in the last couple of years where we've had agreements with the town that, sure, we'll, they'll give you your percentage increase, but you have to have $500,000 allotted from the stabilization fund. So reserves, I keep calling stabilizations technically a reserve, right? So one of the things that we, that was actually, Chair Sullivan reminded us at the end, was that we, or Maya actually might have said it, that we have that safeguard of this fund requires the selectmen to vote to get it out as well, so if we want to use this money, we, it's not like we're just sitting here putting some and taking it out, as some people might think, we're not padding our budget by putting this money away. We are trying to actually plan ahead and plan for that, you know, catastrophic year where, you know, the entire special education department goes out of district or something, which, you know, God help me. But that is really what we're trying to plan for, is just that absolutely horrific thing that we could not have planned for. And that was actually met with support, it actually ended up passing, the Finance Commission, they, they supported it unanimously at the end of their meeting. Mr. Mannion stuck around for the entire meeting to hear that vote. I did not, I hung up. So I appreciate that. So that was good to hear, that I think that, you know, they really understand where we're coming from with this. The history of the stabilization and the circuit breaker specifically were helpful for them to hear how that works and, yeah, so I think that overall went well. Our budget sub went as good as can be expected as we start getting into preliminary budgets.
And just some other pieces, so those are the pieces that are not on agenda items for you tonight. There are a couple, you'll see Mr. Mannion's quarter one report and grant report that he reviewed thoroughly with the budget subcommittee, and he will share what we, what we're doing with the budget for this year and hoping to give back, obviously, that reserve, so we won't need to use it in next year's budget we're hoping for. But he also, just in terms of the five-year forecast, if we were to budget for all of the contractual obligations and changes, right, that are going to be in the next five years, next year it would take us like a 4.1% increase to the total without having any additions to be able to, to implement what we're offering this year in kind of level service piece. We're open to any questions about that as well. You'll also, we also talked about how we were going to do budget priorities, have a discussion about that, and had conversations about the policies that were not put on the agenda last time, the way I should have put them on, but also one policy that's in the consent agenda, budget transfer authority, where there was one change that the budget subcommittee asked for. So that allows me now to approve budget transfers where it used to be 25,000 or more or less, it is now 50,000 or less. And it also changes the codes from two zeros to three. But one of the things they, there was conversation about and confusion about was whether or not we would report, I would report on those quarterly, which would be a change...
Yeah.
Or monthly, we're going to continue that monthly, so that's the only change in that policy now, but the budget subcommittee felt that was appropriate.
Yeah, essentially, at least for me, my comfort level was like, sure, 50,000, but I don't want to wait three months to hear about it. I'd rather just hear it, you know, quickly in a quick update and that just, you know, and if everybody down the line thinks that's just way too much and overkill, then we can vote to go to quarterly at some other point.
Is there any questions on those things that are in the consent agenda that would be a good time to talk about now?
Yeah, exactly, if anybody wants to pull anything out that they're...
I don't want to pull anything out, I just want to ask the question. We did not get any feedback on LBD, right?
We did not, not, it was posted up on the website, we did not.
One of the other thing, just because technically it's money, the MOA is in here, just, again, we already discussed it and voted, but I just wanted to remind everybody that in case you see that in there and say, oh, my God, that's big, no, that's what we've already voted on, there's no changes.
An executive session.
An executive session, that's just on here is...
It was a few weeks back.
Housekeeping to make sure we vote on it in open session.
Does it make sense to ask my budget question now or wait?
Do you want to hear the quarter one financial report? Does it, will it pertain to that perhaps, or?
I don't know.
Why don't we do the quarter ones and the grants, and then if things come up after that?
Sorry, we just jumped to consent agenda, so then I got...
Yes, all right. I just wanted to make sure I told you about our budget-centric ones there in case anybody, you know...
Well, yeah, any discussion?
Yep, yeah.
Okay, all right, sorry if I'm messing things up.
No problem. All right, so we'll pass it over to Mr. Mannion for the quarter one financial report and the grant report.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So here we are for our quarter one FY '26 update, covering through months of July through September is quarter one of the fiscal year. If we turn the page, so we've gone through, the quarter one's always an ambitious report because you have just a month of the school year, but we're projecting forward for the rest of the fiscal year. We're going through every single line of the budget, we're looking at the staffing, we're seeing if everything is aligning with what we planned. When you think about all the shifts in staffing in a school district, this teacher staffing and the COLAs and also people shifting jobs, new hires and everything, happy to report that we have a good financial standing. We've looked at all the FTEs, we will be reporting to the budget subcommittee at the end of October on staffing, and we believe we're within two or three FTEs of our staffing plan, which is, that's amazing. So as of right now, our budget for the fiscal year '26 recap is $65,292,117. We've spent about 12% of the budget, which is just shy of $8 million. We've encumbered another $55 million or close to 84.5%, and spent and encumbered as of right now is $63,125,126,000. We encumber, I'll mention this each time we do this report, we encumber our payroll here, so you're always going to see that what we've spent and encumbered is pretty close to the full budget. Then we add in expenses that aren't encumbered, that's a lot of like the hourly staff, it's things like some tuition, mostly tuition's encumbered, a lot of the hourly staff, other types of expenses like substitutes that we don't encumber, and we also account for the offsets, a large part of that is the circuit breaker credit that we, we transfer expenses out of the operating budget to circuit breaker. We also did build the FY '26 budget with a dependency on $550,000 of the SPED reserve that we've been talking about, but we will be making a recommendation about that. Overall, we're in a good place, we're at a balance of $850,000 as of first quarter, a lot can change, but that was similar to kind of where we were last year. We started first quarter with a balance of $900,000 last year, and we did end the year probably better than that, I think we ended over a million dollars. So last year, things went well throughout the year and it stayed consistent, we'll have to see how this year goes. First quarter's always, you have to take it with a little bit of grain of salt, but the tea leaves look good. So when we look at it, these are sort of the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven big functional areas. The largest one is the 2000s, instructional services. 1,000 is district admin, very close to budget, just a small overage there, there's some, you know, admin salaries and there's some consultants and legal expenses in there, very close to budget. 2,000 is by far the largest part of the district budget, which is everything related to the classroom, from teachers to supplies, everything related to the classroom. We're fairly close to the budget when you look at an overage there of $160,000 compared to how large that budget is, it's really a very small percent. And probably as the year goes on and we have little frictional vacancies from staff that's not being hired, this will probably become more positive as the year goes on. The 3,000s are other school services, that's transportation, so we did increase transportation by 20%, and we were hoping to really retain and recruit more staff. We are retaining our transportation staff, but we're still wanting to recruit this, the labor market for drivers is just really hard right now. So we're saving money, which we, we'd rather hire more staff and have more vehicles operating, but on the flip side, we're saving money here right now.
So Sean, we need substitute nurses, drivers, and we had chartwheels in here telling us they need people at the middle school for lunch ladies.
Okay.
Just saying.
There you go.
Monthless hours.
4,000, 5,000, 6,000 is very small, and then lastly, with tuition, you'll see some more slides on tuition, but things are looking well right now with tuition, which is great, we're saving some, some money on that line, and we'll talk about that later. This is something we show each time, and basically, 83% of our budget is payroll. Most of what goes into a school district are people and salaries. The other 17% are the non-payroll expenses. When you do that by the program area, you see that when you look at payroll, 65% is general ed and 31% is special education, 4% English learners. When you look at the non-payroll, it kind of flips and it becomes more closer to 60% special education, because a lot of the non-payroll expenses are special education-related, like the transportation, the tuition is huge. All right? Funding sources, so this is a slide we include each time with our warrant articles, a lot of these have dropped off, so you can see at the top, we're just watching a few right now that are still here from last year. There was an elementary capacity study, it's fully spent, that'll probably go, you know, back to the town or close it out this, as this fiscal year goes on. There is the new warrant article for the UMass Medicaid salary, so we went in the spring and we got that warrant article, where we're charging three staff. It was two that we took from the operating budget and one that's newly hired. So the staff is, is going to be budgeted on the operating budget, and we're going to move the expenses quarterly over to this warrant article. And I do know, which we can report on at another time, that our Medicaid revenue has increased, even as of last year, the revenue has been increased, which is what, what we were hoping for. Pupil transportation, there's a balance there, which we had said last fall, we would return to the town, and they did take the 209,000 back. We said when we got the five mini buses that we would return this, and I know after this was done, they did take that back. The student services study, that'll sit there until the end of this year, and the 7,780 left, we'll go back to free cash. And then there is a school IT emergency connectivity that Mr. Kidd, he, he does use these funds as he can, so he keeps, keeps using these funds and spending them down. Those are all the warrant articles.
I think I remind everybody every time we mention that warrant article, just for the public's knowledge, that this was a grant, I believe, that Mr. Kidd applied for, and then when it was paid, it was paid to the town and not to the school, so we basically had to get it back to us in a warrant article. So before anyone thinks that we asked for, you know, $200,000 in emergency connectivity, it was actually kind of a roundabout way of us getting the grant that Mr. Kidd had applied for.
And most of these warrant articles kind of have a year, and then they kind of go away, but that one, everybody's got sort of an understanding that he can kind of spend it as...
Yeah, because I think he would have been allowed to do that with the grant, so it, yeah, or even if he, I don't, maybe I'm speaking like completely into verse that way, but...
This is a look at circuit breaker, which is our largest state funding source for special education. When you look at FY '26, you can look at the two prior years, so it is a reimbursement of the prior year's claim, so it's, you make a claim at the end of the school year based on your costs from one year, and you get that reimbursement in the next year. Basically, there's a floor, and anytime a special education student in district or out of district, the costs go above that floor, then the state reimburses you up to 75%, which is the maximum by law. They don't, they don't automatically set it at 75, but they try to get there. Usually what they do is the instructional and tuition, they try, they get that to 75% in the fall, and then whatever they have left, they hold some for districts that have what we call extraordinary relief, which Norwood did get a couple of years ago, you have to have a really large 25, over 25% increase in your costs. And then the last amount they give to transportation, which was part of the Student Opportunity Act, right now, they're, last year they only started transportation at 47%, but by the end of the year, they give, they gave everybody the full 75%, so they sometimes do a fifth payment. Right now, transportation's at 61%. We are getting 5.332 million in circuit breaker, so you can see it's going up every year. I mean, it's, it's a significant amount of money. We have certain expenses that we're projecting to spend in circuit breaker, and as, and we also have sort of just an amount that we keep in the circuit breaker that's sort of just there year to year. So all told, our circuit breaker account, we're projecting to end with about 3 million, which is a good, healthy reserve there as well. When you look at out-of-district tuition, the top is the budget, the left column is what we actually spend. So overall, we budgeted 11.5 million in tuition expenditures in the '26 budget, and then we bring in the credits, close to 5 million in circuit breaker, and we did have $550,000 in the stabilization. And then you, when you look in our actual budget, there's really only a budget of 6 million because of the credits, but we do have placements that cost 11.5 million, we just get reimbursed from the state via circuit breaker. So right now, our placements are at 11, just shy of 11.1 million, so it's under where the budget was, and we have our credits. We also have an additional credit this year for the IDEA grant, so we, when we wrote that grant, which did get approved, we, we put some money in tuition, and that's why we're showing a balance at the end of the day. When you look below, right now, our placements are 80 versus a budget of 82. Last year, we budgeted 81 in the fall, and we were at 93 placements by the spring. So there was a little concern that we were going to start this year with quite a few more out-of-district placements, and when they're placed in the spring, we're only really paying for, you know, a few months, but the 93 from the spring turned into 80 right now, so it came back down.
I think it's really important to note, this is not the number of students that are placed any one time.
Yeah.
This is the number of students that are in, within a placement in the year when he does the count at the end of the year. So for example, it doesn't count students that are going to graduate, it doesn't count students that are, I'm sorry, it does...
It does count.
It does. It also counts students that are in short-term extended evaluations, and it counts kids that have come back, right? So you're always going to have an increase in total numbers as you go through the year because you're bringing kids back to or short-term, and so now, Sean and I talked about that, we're at 80 rather than 98, because you're going to have that back and forth. It's not that, this report is the total number throughout the year cumulative, not at the, any single time.
So if you go back to the prior one with the circuit breaker, so one recommendation that we did talk about in budget sub, which we mentioned at FinCom as well, is because we were projecting this balance of 3 million in circuit breaker, even given all the credits in the budget, we're, we're probably going to come forward when we do a quarter two projection and shift the 550 from the SPED reserve out of our, we don't want to build budgets dependent on using part of the SPED reserve anymore. We just want to keep the SPED reserve as a complete reserve, and that was really helpful to FinCom to hear that. So what we will do is we'll shift the 550 from, from what we call the sped reserve onto Circuit Breaker. So we'll just use more Circuit Breaker and we'll do that this year and next year going forward. So we won't continue to build future budgets needing to spend any of the sped reserve. We'll keep that as a true reserve and that, and like I said, that was something that FinCom, they really appreciated that. So I think that helped them make the decision to support that article going forward.
That was sort of interesting because it was through the budget process and you, the general recommendation from FinCom that we had the 550 on there to have to spend it. Just saying, but.
Well, I think the intent was to spend it last year, but we found different ways to not have to.
Yeah, there were two years in a row that we, we had it in there as a caveat, like to be able to, to get the, the budget increases that we needed. I was going to ask a question. Oh, I did want to mention, because you just mentioned the, the reserve fund again, there was a little bit of conversation at the FinCom meeting about what kind of account that is and whether we could actually transfer it to a different, an interest-bearing account. That was an interesting conversation.
I think, yeah, I think the town director of finance said it should be an interest-bearing account, but it hasn't been because of the way.
We didn't write the warrant that way.
The warrant that was originally written. So there is some question about spring and whether we want to go back to the town and re-authorize it so that it can get interest. But then again, it is capped at 2% of net school spending. So one question is, do we want interest if it's always capped? But if it's always going to go up every year because of net school spending, maybe it is okay to have the interest because it'll help it like just grow a little bit.
You just have to make sure that it never goes over the cap.
Yeah.
Or if it does, then you'd have to vote.
Get a two-thirds vote from each of the committees to vote.
Yeah, just to move it.
Couple dollars out.
Really, to put a couple dollars into the budget or something like that. But I just wanted to mention that because it was actually an interesting thing that the, the, Mr., all my words just failed me. The town finance director.
Mr. O'Neal.
Good Lord, Mr. O'Neal had mentioned. And it was kind of surprised that we hadn't done it that way. But I, I just, I was having been on the committee when that was actually voted in in the first place. I remember the conversations that we had and I think there was, there was some advice externally that this was the way we had to do it. And so we, we just kind of moved forward with the way we had it. So to hear others say, oh no, you, why didn't you do it this way? I'm like, okay, because that's what we were told.
Okay. So this is the, a quick look at the larger revolving accounts. So the leftmost column is what we carried over in revenue. These are a lot of the fee-bearing accounts where you bring in a fee and then you can charge some expenses there. And then you can see the current year receipts in the second column. They all have healthy balances. Down below, you see the sped reserve fund, which we've been talking about. It's now at a million dollars because we added $300,000 from Springtown meeting. And we do have this credit to the operating budget off in the right, which we're hoping to shift. So by second quarter, we're hoping to just shift that and just, we'll plan to just keep the million dollars. And there are 9.55 FTEs that are funded by the revolving accounts. That's tuition, preschool tuition, that revolving account funds paras. And there are some transportation office staff that are charged to the revolving account for the transportation fees and there may be one more.
Joe?
Yeah.
Can you just provide, revolving funds are not just open funds, right? Could you provide just a quick description of how we can use revolving funds and how we can't by law?
They're called special revenue funds. There are different types of them depending on the Mass General Law, but generally, they have to have a specific use and they're going to pull in revenue that has to be used in that specific way. Like so if the transportation fees come into a revolving account and they have to be spent on transportation expenditures. The drama fees come into a drama account and they can spend on drama. So most of these function as sort of like additional to the operating budget, but they're also fee generating accounts.
Yeah, we couldn't take the drama money and pay for a computer science teacher.
Exactly.
Is my, okay, thank you.
And like, the top three are all kind of related to building rental.
Yep.
And we do spend that when we have something building related maintenance or like we need to fix a gym floor or something like that. Mr. Ricardi uses those funds. But they do have to be used for a specific use, usually related to the revenue that's brought in. Quick look at where we're at with transportation, just two slides here. We're, we're, we had an interesting start to the year. We had a lot of changes in transportation, a lot of challenges, but things are sort of smoothing out. We're operating 39 vans and seven buses. We have no spares. We, we, the number of students does climb each year. Right now, we're at 260. This is special education. Students are riding and if you look at last year, we started the year probably down at like 250 and we ended the year at 320. So we increased by 70 students just through the school year. So we can expect the 260 to increase. 63 students right now out of district, 182 in district. We are outsourcing some of our special education because we're just at the limit of our vans and our drivers. So we do have to sometimes pay a vendor to take a, take a trip to somewhere far, like if we have a student going to a school in Hull or something like that. So that's very costly when we do it with, with a vendor. Right now, we did increase our yellow buses from 13 to 16. That was a good choice. We're, we're starting to see very full capacity on the Connolly buses, especially at the middle school. A lot of students are riding. The elementary and high schools are very comfortable for the first time. All of those buses, you know, routing aside, the number of students on the bus are not crowded because we added those three. But the middle school, as we expected, is, is getting to capacity. And this is just a look at month to month. So you can see last year, when you look at September of '24, we were at 250 students by the end of the year. Or we peaked around April at 319. We were helping the regular students with some of Connolly overload last year. So we were actually using some of our mini buses to help with regular ed students. We can't do that this year. We just need to keep, keep that on. Those, no hotel students this year and one last slide. So quick overview, good news is the increase in driver monitor wages has helped us retain van drivers and monitors. We added three big buses this year. That alleviated overcrowding at the high school and elementary schools. That's a great win. New registration system we did this year, easier registration and tracking all students. We got great response on the registrations, the way we tweak the fee. The challenge is we're still having difficult recruiting CDL bus drivers. Also, number two, transportation department has run out of vehicles. We have no spares. Every vehicle is in use. We're still waiting for the five mini buses. It's been over a year since last year's Fall Capital. We're still waiting for three vans that we're going to be getting from this year's capital. Everything's taking a lot of time to get vehicles delivered.
And just for the public, we, we, when we ordered them, we knew it was like a 15, 16-month wait period. So it's just a, it's the waiting game.
As a matter of fact, we went early to get, to request the mini buses where we would normally go in the spring for the schools. We went, Mr. Bishop did come to the fall to make sure he got ahead of that.
And that was, that was wise because here we are, we're still waiting and we're hoping to get delivered by the end of the calendar year. The buses to Coakley are still getting overcrowded. We're looking at daily head counts even with the addition of three buses. You know, with the middle school being located on one far end of town and most middle school kids riding the bus, that's, it's a high demand. So we need, if we had, in our perfect world, additional vans, another mini bus and two more CDL drivers. That's it.
Any questions, Mr. Mannion?
Do we go through, you want to take, if anybody has questions and then we have that grants report?
You want to look at the grant quick too at the same time? It's probably, yeah.
Grants pretty quick. This is a overview of some of the large entitlement and state grants that we got this year. So we did this report last year. So one thing we found out, there's a lot of information about the federal grant cycle. So the federal FY 2025 budget funds the grants that the state gives out with FY '26. So that's why all of the grants we wrote this, for this FY '26 are solid. The state's already received the money. And we've already in fact gotten our grants written. And the amounts you see in the following pages are the amounts we've been approved for. What's potentially being discussed that could be at risk is the '26 federal budget, which would be our '27 grants. The things that we've heard, Title I could be reduced, Title II and Title IV could potentially be eliminated.
Which is really professional development.
Which, yeah. So we'll have to talk about that when we get to FY '27 budget. But as far as FY '26 grants go, these grants, the state already has the funds.
Where does Medicaid fit in?
Medicaid is separate, Medicaid is totally separate. We haven't heard any big reductions to Medicaid, although it's been mentioned a lot. We haven't seen the school-based Medicaid yet.
I think what you'll see is as they push to reduce Medicaid funds, if that happens, they'll leave it up to states to figure out, right, what, who gets the funds. And it, there's going to be a choice whether it's hospitals or it's school districts and it's likely going to be the bigger medical places. So although there won't be a, we're reducing school-based medical Medicaid funds, there will be a conversation with overall Medicaid reductions at some point. But nothing that has impacted us yet.
Sorry, there's so many things to try to keep track of in that realm. Oh, it will come to me as I said, I had another question, a little bit of a question.
So looking at the grants, Title I, 600,000, we do teachers. You can see what the uses are. That is one, it, when we get to this point next year, a budget, this could, you know, we could be looking at a reduction here. Title IIA is a lot of PD, new, new teacher monitoring, private school and bookkeeper, 94,000. Title III, teacher stipends for after-school programming, bookkeeper. When we say bookkeeper, we mean, we can charge some of our administrative overhead, like our grants. We have a grants bookkeeper. So we can charge some of the people who are working on the administrative part of the grants to the grant.
Title III is the ELE stuff.
Yeah, Title III is all ELE. Title IV is mostly PD and technology.
It's technology and, and social emotional learning.
240, the large IDEA grant, that's a very large special education grant. We are, this mostly will pay now for paraprofessional supplies, one out of district placement and benefits. We're moving off for OTPT to the operating budget, but then we're moving on nine paras. The superintendent mentioned that earlier. So if we want to do Medicaid claiming for these OTPT staff, they can't be paid by a federal grant. You can't double dip. So we need to move them onto the operating budget because we're trying to make more types of related services claiming for Medicaid. We can't have them up being paid federal, with federal funds. So that's good. That'll also save on MTRS retirement costs, so we're making that shift. But it's all cost neutral. There will be about 23, 22 paras on this grant. So it does pay for a lot of paras, that large special education grant. There's a smaller one that's specifically for preschool that pays for a .9 pair and some supplies. Then there are a few state competitive grants. We got the PRISM grant, which is a large state competitive grant. We are receiving, are expected to receive 723,000 this year. And I'm sure Dr. Munoz could speak more about it. We, it, it's a multi-year grant and it's competitive, mostly to fund MTSS and literacy. We're just sort of at the beginning stages of that grant.
I think you heard a lot about that when the principals came in for their school improvement plan.
Yeah, last year they allocated 19,000, which you guys approved 19,000 from the grant. And this year, it's a whole lot more money, so.
There's an early literacy tutoring. These funds don't come to us, but there are slots that the state has for our students for high dosage tutoring. And the state allocated Norwood Schools 285,000. It doesn't, we don't actually receive those funds, but we have these spots available. And then we still are spending down some of the emergency assistance from the shelters, which we can still, we can still use for one more year. We have about 322,000 remaining that we can spend on students that were in the shelters but moved into other parts of Norwood. So that'll be spent down this year.
All right.
It's a lot, a lot to digest there.
Thank you, Dr., Mr. Mannion. Does anyone have any questions on the quarterly update? I know Joan is thinking of, you remembered?
I remembered.
Okay.
So with the, and it's not connected to anything that Sean said, of course. With the shutdown happening, does, I know that our free lunch and breakfast program is partially funded by federal and partially funded by state. I think they just announced that SNAP is probably not going to be distributed on time. Does that impact our ability to provide free lunch and breakfast for all?
We were, I thought we had three months, should we have three months, two or three months?
We, they said that reimbursements should be good up through the end of October. If we start going into November, the reimbursements, we're going to have to start paying attention to the lunch reimbursements due to the, the government shutdown. Now, we do have a healthy balance in our account, so we may be situated pretty well because we have like $2 million in our account. That could help us whether that time, I'm sure a lot would be coming out from the state as, as well because state of mass is free, universal free. But we know, we heard at least initially that reimbursements would be good up through the end of October.
I think, what is today?
Almost, almost the end of October.
Which is why I'm asking.
But, but to Mr. Mannion's point, if it does continue and there's no relief there, that, that revolving account is very positive right now. We've been trying to figure out what, because we can't use it for anything. So, you know, for everything that we'd like to. So that's a great use of those funds if we had to.
Kind of to your, your point before about what can you use revolving funds for? These have to be used in the realm of.
Yeah.
School nutrition, so, yeah.
I just want to point out again, impact to parents, right? If we do have to make a pivot, today's the 22nd, right? So eight days is actually not a lot of time for parents to pivot to feeding, breakfast and lunch.
Well, we're, we're still going to provide it. We're just not going to get reimbursed for it necessarily to the community, right?
We still.
For right now. But I, again, with, we look at difficult budget situations. I'm just, I, I would rather us be talking about this stuff earlier rather than later and making priority decisions earlier rather than later. If we've got 2 million in a revolving fund, what does that look like in terms of actual monies that has to go out to make that up? Is, does that take us to March? Does that take us to June? Does like?
Well, we know, so technically, we've talked about the revolving. So technically by law, we're supposed to have three months operating in that revolving, which is about 800 to 900,000. So our monthly expenses are like, but that, yeah, that takes into account probably the reimburse. I mean, we have to look into that and see what it, what it involves. I think a lot will be coming out from the state too because Massachusetts is universally, universal free, that other districts won't be as well situated as we are. So I think something will be coming out, but we can do more research on that.
So as somebody who was on the school committee during the COVID pandemic, I'm well aware of, of the, the statement, the state will be coming out with guidance. Yeah, that guidance often is contradictory. That guidance also often is, hey, yeah, you have to do this, but figure out how to pay for it. That guidance often is very late in comparison to what the needs are on the ground. So I'm, I personally am not comfortable with just saying, well, the state will tell us what to do because during COVID, that was a hot flaming mess. And I don't want to do that again.
So we can go through, identify what we could cover over the term of the month with that and then we can come back with a conversation. Within the budget too, right? Because we're going to have to address the, what happens if there's no mass health, right?
Yeah.
Going to have to address what happens if there's no school nutrition reimbursement? What happens if they decide to reduce Title I funds? What happens if they would decide to reduce the piece? That's all going to be part of the budget process too preliminary. You'll hear a lot of that in the coming months, but I'll definitely address the nutrition piece.
Yeah, so anything that we think has the potential to hit us now, hit us this year before the next budget process, we, I, I would like for us to start making, if not plans, at least awareness raising votes.
Why don't I, we'll add that to our budget subcommittee conversation at upcoming because that's, that's a, and then we can bring it back to the next meeting when we're talking budget.
Okay.
Yep. Sounds reasonable.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Mannion. So we are, we discussed earlier in the meeting that we are going to push the FY '27 budget priorities discussion to November 4th. So we will hop over that and that just brings us to our consent agenda. So you can see all the items in the consent agenda, including minutes, budget transfers, the policies that we discussed earlier, the MOA with you today. And then of course, I, I will mention the donations as we, this, this meeting from Base State Textiles and the amount of 66360. Thank you, Base State Textiles. That's our, if anyone who doesn't know, that's our program where we, you can, outside of the schools, where you can get rid of your old textiles. They get recycled and we get money for it. So if it's kind of crummy and really shouldn't be going to savers, go drop it in one of those bins because then your school will get, your school will get money. Are there any questions on any, any of the consent agenda items? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Moved by Judith?
Seconded.
Seconded by, what my brain is, Joan?
Yes.
Seconded by Joan. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that passes three to zero. I'm telling you, I have hit the brain fog like age. Okay. So that brings us to our school committee addenda. Judith, do you have anything this evening?
No, I didn't have.
Joan, do you have anything this evening?
I do not.
Fabulous. I also do not have anything this evening. I just want to thank everybody for joining us. We do not need to go into an executive session, hurrah. There, we will be back here in this room on November 4th at 7:00 PM. And I do need a motion to. And I do need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Joan.
Second.
Seconded by Judith and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much and have a great night.
Night everyone.